All right, it is ten o'clock. I'm gonna call this Monday, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Board of Equalization meeting to order. First item is a roll call. Mr. Brett Towns.
President.
Ms. Eleanor Thompson.
President.
And I'm Patrick Crawley, and I'm here. All right, the first item on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding approval of the minutes of July tenth, twenty twenty-three, July twelfth, thirteenth, and seventeenth and eighteenth of twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt and accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, we have three properties on the board. The first one, item number two, BOE number one thirty-four, which is a count ending in three, zero, zero, zero. We have a copy of an email from the agent representing the Walmart Neighborhood Market. And this is Brady Leepold. And he withdraws his appeal. So.
Is that the Walmart?
Yes.
The taxpayer always has the right to withdraw the appeal unless we've already decided it. Okay. And the next item is BOE number one sixty-two, which is account number ending in one, zero, one, zero. Uh, show the owner as NGL RE Holdings LLC. Looks like Wyatt Swinford Esquire. Is that you?
That is my, well, partner under which I work.
Okay, and you are?
Brady Leepold.
Oh, you're Brady? Okay, sorry.
Yep. I said that and it bothered me.
Okay. And you were then aware that you withdrew the Walmart Neighborhood Market. Okay. All right, we're at BOE number one six-two, account number ending in ten-ten. Looks like the, uh, this is two sixteen West Covell. Uh, looks like the assessor has assessed this at a million four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And it looks like taxpayer wants five hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay. All right, tell us what you want to say to all about this property.
Okay, um, so.
Tell us what it is to begin with.
Yeah, so this property, uh, as it's pulled up here, is a veterinary clinic.
Okay.
So I'll kind of, I'm trying to debate on what would be the easiest place to start. There's really, so there's the, the value, uh, you know, issue on, uh, on which we appealed, but there's also something that came up, uh, through the informal. Uh, it's just, there was a bunch of confusion on, on both our side and I think the assessor's office. And I, I had a phone call with, um, I believe a Jenny with the assessor's office on Friday to try and, and discuss this. So I'll start, I'll start there before the value. What had happened here is you can kind of see it on this. There was.
Zoom in, Mike. Two buildings?
So there is, there is one structure there and, um, nothing changed or anything. But what, you can see the kind of the area behind the building, um, behind the green outline, but within the blue.
Yes.
So what that is, is a, we'll just call it a, a pad. I mean, there's not really a concrete slab or anything there yet, but we'll just call it a pad. And what the, the owner did is they went in and they, um, condoed out the structure from the pad. So the Woodland RE Holdings owns the, what you can see outlined in green, uh, within the blue. And then NGL RE Holdings owns what is behind the, the green, but within the blue. So no- nothing changed as far as the property itself, other than that declaration that was filed to, to split that ownership. And the reason that they do that is so they can, in, in the future, maybe next year, maybe two years, they're going to build on that, uh, that little area behind it. They're gonna put another building so they, but they, you know, are waiting to, to find a tenant, to find someone who, uh, they can get an agreement in place with to go ahead and build that. So they split that off just so they can more easily market that area and say, hey, you know, this area right here behind this, uh, us, NGL, um, we own this and it's ready to be built on. That way it doesn't get confused with the other property that's on there. Um, it, it's, it's kind of confusing, but.
No, but the assessor, the assessors, for purposes of the assessor, it, he just has an account in the blue.
So that was, when we appealed, that was our understanding. I think when the declaration was filed, it triggered something in the assessor's office of, oh, hey, um, this has been condoed out. And I think from my discussion with Jenny on Friday, I think when that declaration was filed, what the assessor's office thought was, and Steve can correct me if I'm incorrect here, but, um, I believe the assessor's office thought, oh, that we were conduing out the, the structure there. So almost as if we had put a wall up and split the structure, you know, fifty-fifty, um, and made it to where, uh, you know, that vet clinic was now capable of being two separate units. And so what the assessor's office did was they took the original account that, say, last year, and they split it into two. So there's actually two separate accounts now. And they split the value five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, which if.
Is that where they come up with the million four?
Right, because last year's value was a million four. And this year, from what I understand, is the overall value hasn't changed. But it was just divided between the two, um, now account numbers. Um, but in, it's, instead of that property or the structure being split in half, it's just the, that lot is now its own, um.
Would you mind going up there?
Yeah.
And before you do, when was this declaration that split it? When was that filed?
Beginning of last year, I believe. I believe it was the fall.
September twenty-sixth, twenty-two is what was filed.
Yep, so.
Well, what, what was appealed? What, what we're looking at?
So when we filed the appeal, all we had at that time, because we had no, uh, knowledge or didn't receive, um, any sort of, of notification or anything, that there was a, a split of the accounts. Um, we still appealed, you know, based on last year's account number, which was, you know, the blue. And so we appealed, and it wasn't until we got to the informal that we had realized, oh, there's, um, now two different accounts and, and we split them fifty-fifty. Uh, so this now, from what I understand, is its, its own account, what's in the green here, which is, you know, the structure and the parking lot. When that declaration was filed, what it did is it, um.
What's that other?
Yeah, what's that on the right? On the right sense?
Right.
Right hand side of the blue.
That's an elementary.
Yeah, that, this is a separate, um, this, this area here doesn't, um, have, we're just, we're just operating in the blue here.
But what is it?
I, I don't know. That's, it's not our.
It's an offhand draw.
No, not in the appeal.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah, it's just, just the blue here is the subject property.
Being appealed.
Right, um, so we had, you know, this area right here in the green is now owned, uh, or is, is still, rather, owned by Woodland RE Holdings. The declaration separated this part off and is owned by NGL RE Holdings. Um, and it's, like I had mentioned, it's just to make sure that a future tenant that they were gonna go into business with and, and build a, a property for it, a lease to them, that they didn't get confused with anything right here. It just makes it easier to, to market, and that was the intention of, of doing that. It didn't, they didn't do anything to the property itself, but that's, uh, Steve, are, are we on the same page there? Is that kind of?
I've, see, I thought that it was originally separated off from the part on the right, is what I had always thought.
Okay.
Was the deal.
I see.
Because there were, I think it's been divided about three times now between those four pieces.
Yeah, so the, they're, the client, I'll just use that term loosely, the client, from what I understand, is they do own this, but it's like, you know, a separate account.
Now.
And so the, actually, the NGL Holdings that owns this is an entity of the client. Same as Woodland Real Estate Holdings is an entity of the client. Um, but I think from my discussion with the assessor's office on Friday is, uh, when I had mentioned that there was, you know, we had filed this declaration to, uh, just make sure that the empty pad was not confused with this. The, um, Jenny, I believe that was her name, she.
Yeah.
She said, um, yeah, she was like, wait, you said empty pad, what, what do you mean? And I said, well, that's what we were dividing. She said, oh, and made it sound like, I think the assessor's office was under the thought that we had divided like this.
Yeah.
To where then it was fifty-fifty, um, because the declaration does say, you know, uh, this is a fifty-fifty ownership interest between building A and building B, and it's misleading because it says building B, but there's, I mean, there's not a building yet. It's just, in the future, there will be, and so that's why the declaration reads the way it does. So I just wanted to, to set that up, um, just to kind of get that confusion, um, you know, kind of cleared up at the, at the beginning and then get to the value argument.
So just for my purposes, take your finger and outline what you're claiming is five hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred.
So our, um, our appeal, so again, when we appealed, we just had one account number. Our appeal is steel, is still on the entire blue.
Okay.
Um, but they're just now, after the informal, we found out, are two account numbers.
Okay.
So it's still on, so where's, our asserted value is still on the entire blue there.
But are there two account numbers that you appealed?
Well, and so that, that was what we had, you know, discussed in the informal is that we had, we had not received any notice of the other account number, so we had no way of appealing on the other account numbers. Until after the informal, we were informed, oh, there's, there's two account numbers to, that still encompass the same property that last year was this account number. And that's at the information, you know, when it came up to the, the deadline to appeal, we just had to go off of the information that we had available to us, which was that this property here was on one account number, and so that's what we had filed the appeal. But our appeal still concerns everything within this. Whether the assessor's office split, uh, the property into two different account numbers, or whether they were the same, it, it wouldn't affect the, um, the merits, I guess, of our appeal.
So even though there's two different account numbers, we're still saying this is, uh, the fair market value is five hundred and some thousand dollars.
Yes.
This.
Yes, five, uh, five thirty-one nine hundred. Um, and I will pass out. This here is the, um, the site map, but it's extreme. It's one of those that's been scanned over three different times. It's really hard to see, but it kind of lays out just what I was discussing there of where the building B will eventually be and where building A is. Um, but it, again, it's up to see, so I'll just use this exhibit, which, um, was provided to the assessor's office at the informal.
Oh, okay.
And this is a sale comp analysis.
This was presented after the.
Yes, sir.
All right, do you need anything else?
Um, no, I was, other than just going over the, the sales comps, that's really the, the crux of our argument.
Good. All right, well, that was in the appellate package. All right, uh, we'll hear from you.
But with this one, the, on your comps, the square footage that you're giving, is that, is that a square foot of a building or square foot of your rectangle?
The, the three thousand and eight is the square footage of the structure. So, um, just for simplicity sake, I just use the, uh, cost per square foot based on, and I did the same for the sale comps as well.
You didn't calculate any, uh, value for the parking or the other property that's not being utilized at this time?
It's in, it's inclusive within the, the five hundred and three thousand, or the, rather, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars square foot because on the sale comps, those are, that, those, uh, sale prices are inclusive of the parking, uh, additional land that may be there. Uh, because we're really talking of a, I mean, that's about a, I think a total of about a one acre of, of land in, in total. And, I mean, all of these, I don't have it broken down by, you know, particular land size, but all of these will be on, um, comparable land sizes.
What was the sale price when it was sold, uh, in twenty twenty?
Uh, it was constructed in twenty twenty.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Well, now, there was a, a sale for four hundred and five thousand dollars in twenty nineteen. Was that, was that for that full tract of land?
Yeah.
How much?
Uh, four hundred and five thousand, five hundred. Go back to our aerial, please, Michael.
And what about the dock stamps on the building?
Building, uh, apparently as I sold.
It wouldn't have any.
No.
They sold it as land, only with no building.
So what you're.
I'm talking about the building itself, but wasn't that, you say it just got built?
Yeah, but there was no dock stamps on it because it hadn't sold. The only thing that sold was the, was the land prior to the construction. So. So let me get this, right, so you're saying that we should have, is there supposed to be, is there a, a separate parcel for this area down below versus this? Is this like, the end in ten-ten and the one you're appealing is like one thousand, or vice versa?
Yes, one, um, yes, one thousand slash ten-ten.
Okay, so which one is ten-ten versus one thousand? Do we, do we know?
I believe that the one thousand is the north.
North section.
And then the ten-ten is the, or I, I apologize. Yeah, that is correct. The ten-ten, or the, the one thousand is the north and the ten-ten is the south.
Okay, so we're dealing with, at this point, vacant land on this one, this one's, okay, got the total vibe, but you're, okay.
Well, let me see, he, he said, because he was unaware when he filed this, that you guys had split it. So his valuation is for the entirety of that rectangle. You guys knew that you had split it, so in January of this year, when you did the valuation, was your one million on the entirety of that rectangle or just the north half?
No, I believe it was, before the split, the, the million four hundred thou, or the million four thousand was for the entire thing. And then when she split it, apparently, it was done at an even split.
And it says in there in the declaration to split fifty-fifty.
Why would you do that with one part having a building and one part money?
I, I think it's what he just said, is that according to that, it was an undivided, or a fifty percent ownership was when the split was, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so reading it off of that. I can see where the confusion is. You're trying to do a split, but you only got one building there. That, the fact that he's asking for five hundred thousand off of each one is, is, I, I think, off. It should be, you know, less on the lower part and then more, you know, set up on, on, on the upper side. But it shouldn't be five hundred thousand dollars just for, for the entire thing. I mean, they paid four hundred thousand for the entire thing. It wouldn't make sense to split it fifty, it wouldn't make sense to make fifty-fifty.
I thought you said your five hundred and thirty-one. I told you to take your finger and draw what you said was worth five thirty-one nine, and it was the entirety of the rectangle.
That is correct.
That's not what you're saying.
No, that's what I say, is I disagree with that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, how could he have spent five, four hundred thousand dollars for the entire tract and now with your building on there saying it's only worth five hundred thousand? That's not logical to me. Now, it's not logical the way it's split up right now. It's hard to see because we don't have a division line in there, but. So legally, this is all one plat. You can put it, you can put a note in saying, well, we're, we'd like to differentiate the north part and then the south part separately, but if I go look at the title on this, this is one plat still?
Uh, as long as the, the declaration that was filed, uh, it is still on the same site plan.
Right.
So it is, yeah, one plat. The, the owner really was, um, was, didn't want it to be split. I mean, we want it to be one parcel because the, whether it's NGL or, or Woodland, it's the same owner. I mean, different entities, uh, because they want separate entities owning, uh, the different portions of it. But at the end of the day, uh, as far as property taxes go and being assessed, it would be ideal if it was still just on one, uh, you know, account, I guess, within the assessor's office.
Okay.
But it's not.
Correct.
But because of the declaration that was filed.
Right.
And when did you say you filed a declaration?
Back in September.
Oh, okay, so for purposes of one-one twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
There should be two separate parcels.
Two separate parcels.
I.
Is that, is that on you guys not to have done that?
No, we did, uh, it's just not showing up on the, on the aerial yet.
You, you did it before one-one twenty twenty-three, or you did it for as of?
For as of. Can you pull that parcel up on the? I don't know if it, if it's actually drawn in yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there, in reality, there's two, there's two parcel numbers that are encompassed within that blue line that he's talking about. Okay, so it's.
One account is in one thousand, the other in, in, in ten-ten.
Yes.
Okay.
Wow. For purposes, you have not, what are you gonna do, what are you gonna do next January? If he doesn't do anything, if nothing gets built, what are you gonna do next January? Are you gonna send one or two notices?
Would have to be two. One for one thousand, one for ten-ten.
But you didn't this year.
Apparently because it was an even split and it was within the same ownership name.
I see.
And you don't have to, you don't, only have to send a notice if there's an increase in value.
Okay, gotcha.
Had one of them gone to a different name, it would have got.
Okay.
Should have been sent a notice, so.
You straighten?
At the end of the day, whether it's one account or two accounts, the, the amount that you've re, arrived at for that whole thing is a million and four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Added together, yes, sir.
All right.
So.
And doesn't count that thing across the street or across the.
To the east or, no, apparently not.
Okay.
Apparently, apparently that was split off from that earlier, uh, previous year, so I'm with you. I'm trying to block that out of my, out of my mind.
But Steve, let me ask you this. In other cases that we've had, maybe, that Steve, because if, I've seen it happen in more on residential, you all will sit here and tell us they pulled a building permit and you give us the amount of money. Okay, so we could start here with four hundred and five-five. So this Steve, was there a building permit pulled for this building?
Sure there was. We can look quickly.
Isn't that, is that the correct question I need to be asking?
No, in my mind, the correct question would be, how much did it cost to build the building?
Well.
Because the permit many times is not near what the actual cost of the building was. And I'm not a real proponent of cost, but that would get you more along the lines of what you're asking for.
Well, yeah, because I'm, I'm, I'm looking at a one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar differential between the, the sale when there was nothing on it.
I agree.
That's, well, did you find it?
We estimate the cost of this building permit was five hundred thousand dollars for the building. But we would have to call the city of Edmond. We can't access building permits like we can in Oklahoma City. We'd have to call the building permit department of Edmond to get more information.
Uh, could we ask this question? Is the building owned or leased?
Is it, is, well, so it's actually an interesting setup. It is partially owned, partially leased. So, uh, to give a little insight, the, the vet that is operating out of there,
Yes.
that whole, the blue rectangle.
Uh-huh.
The vet actually owns fifty percent and, uh, um, the, the Ashton Gray entity, because that's who the, the client technically is, an Ashton Gray entity, and the Ashton Gray entity owns fifty percent. So it's actually a little bit of both.
Okay, okay.
So the vet purchased?
When they initially, so practically speaking, how this, how these typically will come into play is, you know, Ashton Gray, uh, will kind of be looking for a, a space because they're like, well, we want to, um, invest in, in this area. And so then they will get into contact with prospective tenants and then they will say, hey, tenant, uh, we're looking to develop in this area. Would you want to get to an agreement? Say yes. And so then they go out and they buy the land. Well, here, it was, hey, tenant, uh, do you want to, um, go, rather than lease this property from us, do you want to go in together with us and develop this land to, into a, you know, veterinary clinic that you can operate and you have half ownership in? So there wasn't a conveyance. It was, they were both in this at the beginning together.
The beginning of building the building, but not at the beginning of buying the land?
With, the order of which, on this particular case, I'm not, I'm not sure if they struck. Usually what happens is they strike an agreement first and then they go out and say, okay, well, I want to be in this area. So then they'll find the area and, and that's also, um, the, the land value, it, we always, um, this, this is, I understand why this is like, well, they just paid four hundred thousand dollars for the land. You're telling me the structure is only a hundred and thirty thousand based on the, the value? And there's, there's really two things. One, when this land is purchased, a lot of the times, uh, if you have the agreement with the tenant in place ahead of time, you're more willing to pay a higher value for the land because it's like, well, I gotta get something here for the tenant that I have an agreement with and I already know that this is locked in, so there's less risk. So there's that aspect, but more importantly, um, the, even if that wasn't, weren't the case, whenever they're buying the lot, the land, they're buying an empty lot with development potential. So it, it isn't a, um, practically speaking, it, it's not as simple as, well, what did they buy this land for, plus the cost of the building? Okay, this is what a willing buyer would pay to a willing seller for this. Because, well, that's what they paid for an empty lot that was ripe for development. It is now not an empty lot ripe for development. It's rather a building with a little bit of a lot behind it that you could develop on. But if you took the, the, if you were just going to take the cost of the land plus the cost to build and arrive at your value, um, well, you can take the cost of the land, but in order to say that that four hundred and, uh, that four hundred thousand is the value of that land today, you would have to also agree that, okay, well, if that's what the value of the land is, then whoever buys it would come in and tear the building down because that was the price of the land when there was no building on it. So whenever you build a structure on the land, I mean, it brings the, the land aspect value down. And that's why on the sales comps, that is reflective of almost, it's almost an economic obsolescence factor that is applied to the value of the land once a structure is built. And that's why I urge the, the sales comps as the best evidence of the value.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm not gonna buy that argument.
All right.
Sorry, I go in there and put in a building, it's the highest and best use, uh, or something like that, a brand new piece of land. Uh, what was, was the, was there all utilities and all that stuff on there at the point, at the time? time that they purchased it? Do you know? I mean, did they not do any kind of improvements to the land itself to make it ready for development? Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
I would attribute that value to the structure. Because again, you would have to tear the structure down.
Well, let's hear from the assessor.
I, I, I will agree that the back portion of the land would not have as much value as the part up front. I'll, you know, I'll, I'll go with, I'll go with that. But, you know, they are, they are making it ready for development to the back end of the deal.
But that's a street back, at the back end, right? That's not an alley when that's a street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so it does have two entrances to the, it actually does have two entrances to it. Okay, yeah.
Cobell and Sonic.
Yeah, okay. So, so it should have equal, pretty much equal, uh, value to it then.
Equal value from a, a standpoint of the land?
Yeah, cause.
Well, access. It's not like you gotta now grant an easement to, for the person to get to the back of the.
Right. I was just making sure that, um, that, uh, Steve wasn't saying that equal value as far as that empty lot having equal value to the, the north portion with the structure on it.
No, 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 no.
Um, the only, the last thing I would add is, at the very least, if, if the board is not persuaded on the value argument, I would request that, uh, and maybe Steve would even agree to this, that out of the total value, say it's left at, at one million four thousand, that you know, just roughly speaking, ninety percent of that value be attributed to the, the parcel on the north and then ten percent of that value being attributed to the parcel on the, the south.
The vacant.
The vacant. Um, cause as it's split now, I mean, obviously the.
That, that means you would, you would buy that, you would buy that eight, about eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars would be the value of the front side? You said ninety percent. My math's pretty close there.
Well, I'm just saying, so the, the entire, you know, that entire rectangle right now,
Yeah.
the, the assessor's value is, is a million.
Yeah.
But it's, technically it is, um, in two separate parcels within the assessors. So what I'm just saying is attributing, you know, ninety percent of that value to the, this portion of the structure and then ten percent to the, the south portion, just because, you know, obviously the, the empty lot is not worth, um, the same value as the portion with the, the parking lot and the, the structure on it.
All right. And the assessor doesn't have a value on the ten ten yet? You don't have a fair market value?
We do have a value on the ten ten.
Five, split directly in half.
Split it in half.
Which one thousand?
Going, yeah, right off of here. We look at the declaration here and we go to the end.
I think that's the part that's most confusing.
Unit designations, uh, ownership proportion fifty percent, fifty percent.
Right, but we don't have a building on building on, on that one. That's what's thrown at, right?
Yeah, that, that's, and that's what I'm just requesting is, you know, of course, when, you know, when a building and there's an improvement made on the land, that value's going to go up. And in the meantime, I would just request uh, that the majority of the value, I, I, I just came up with ninety ten, just for simplicity's sake, the majority of that value be attributed, you know, to the, um, the north parcel and then say ten percent to the south. And even if you wanted to do it, if you're looking at it at straight cost, if you wanted to divide the, the land value in half, um, to, I get, was it four?
Four oh five.
Four oh five, so roughly two hundred thousand to the, the south portion and then, uh, roughly eight hundred thousand to the north portion.
Okay, but the whole thing's owned by the same entity.
That's, that's the part that I was concerned about right there. So if you do that, if we reallocate it, it's not gonna throw somebody else in the tizzy, right?
Correct. It's the, the, that fifty percent ownership that's reflected in there is fifty percent ownership of everything within that blue, original blue rectangle. So, yeah, at the end of the day, the tax liability is falling on the, on the same people. Um, it's just a matter of, um, the vet that is operating in that, uh, facility would like to, I, I take this back. The tax liability is not falling exactly on, uh, the same. The vet is responsible for the north parcel and then Ashton Gray is, until something is developed, is paying the property tax on the south parcel, parcel, which is the importance of why I request, uh, a roughly eight hundred thousand to two hundred thousand split.
Well, I understand that, but the, the vet doesn't show up on the, uh, assessors, like for, for this year, at, you know, at, uh, January first.
Well, he never does, because it's a, this, it's a.
Entity.
Entity.
Right, but we do have, we do have two parcels that are sitting out there. Yeah, so.
You both have a fair market value.
That equals the million. Yeah, so I, I agree that we should reallocate the amount to account for the improved part on the north side and, and, and go back down, reduce on the land value.
We can't.
We can't do the.
Ten ten is on our.
I, if I understand you right, you agree with the million four thousand four hundred and forty-eight, it's just the allocation of that amount.
I don't agree with it. I, the, I am making the point of, but if the board agrees with it, um, then I would, at the very least, request that it be allocated pursuant to, or to reflect the value of the improvement versus not having an improvement. So, you know, everything else stays the same at, you know, um, as far as total value goes at a million four, I would just request that, um, you know, roughly eight hundred thousand be attributed to the north part and then roughly two hundred thousand be attributed to the undeveloped south part.
I'm not sure we have that jurisdiction to do that.
The, the appeal is on both parcels. The nine seven six reflects both, um, the account ending in one thousand and the account ending in ten ten.
Okay.
So that, that does, uh.
Which one has the building and what have you?
The north parcel is the, uh, the north parcel is the one ending in one thousand.
Okay.
And then the south is the, I apologize, the north building, the, the structure with the building ends in one thousand.
Okay.
And then the portion of the parcel, we'll call it the south parcel, is undeveloped, no structure, and that ends in ten ten.
Okay, well, then let me ask you this. What is the assessor's value placed on one thousand that you're appealing?
It's five and five.
Yes.
Yeah, they just.
Split evenly five hundred thousand.
You should split it right in half.
Right, because what we saw on the declaration was that it was an under, it was a fifty percent ownership and that's how that happened.
All right, and what's the exact amount of that half and half?
It would be five hundred and two.
Five hundred and two.
Two forty-four.
Correct.
Five hundred and two thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars.
Now, can you, can you double check that mic on, on, uh, on?
Yeah, I'm showing it here from the property card. Five oh two, two four four.
Can you pull, uh, AP five back up?
Sorry.
Now, okay, so there's ten ten and five oh two, two forty-four. And so if you go to, uh, one thousand, it should also say five thousand, five hundred two thousand two forty-four. Yes, so, yes, they are equally split that way. And that's, that's where it appears that it happened. And I can see what he's talking about. I think that that's what we were looking at in the vision, cause it said building. They took the one building and split it in two and, and divided them equally that way, when in reality, building B hasn't been constructed yet.
Right, all right.
So.
So what, what we're dealing with here is an appeal from two separate accounts. And they're both five hundred and two thousand two hundred and forty-four bucks.
Yes.
That's what the appeal is.
And y'all were gonna split it after we set the value?
No, I think we'll set the value on both of them.
Okay.
Correct, right?
So.
The only question I had was because, like he said, that he had appealed both of them, but only, only one of them showing up on the agenda.
Yeah. So, yeah, so.
Ten ten.
Yeah, so the reason for that is because only one form was submitted. Um, it's technically, at least in the precedent of how we've done it, one appeal. Um, now, as far as how to handle that and how we've placed that on, on the agenda, that's been unprecedented. For decision day, if, since I haven't created that agenda yet, if you would like to rule separately on them, then we can go ahead and include the other one on there.
Well, I think if we, because if we don't this year, then that, set then ten ten's value is at five hundred some thousand dollars. Which would, in my mind, be inherently unfair to taxpayer.
I believe it would be, yeah, it would look odd.
It would look odd. You know, half an acre lot for a half million dollars when the whole acre was sold for four hundred thousand. I, have we heard from the assessor on the value of, what they think the value of the building and the parking and everything is?
No.
I think we've gotten kind of convoluted in this thing.
Right.
Some order back in.
Cause did you do sale comp analysis?
No, we, no, we did not. We had what we had on there. And again, that was because the whole thing looked like it was, it was weird, but yes. Uh, overall value, um, sorry, I want to go back to where my notes were on here. From what I was working on there. So I was up to about seven hundred thousand on the north part. That's about where I was. And which, so if we could do seven hundred on the, on the improved side and three hundred on the, on the backside of it.
Okay, so let's do seven hu, let's do seven hundred and four, four eighty-eight versus flat three hundred. How about that? That makes the math work. Cause you gotta, you gotta.
Well, you're like.
No, well, you, you said.
Yeah, but I, but I, I agree with what you're saying.
Okay.
I'm applying the ointment.
Okay.
Were restricted by statute for whatever the appeal is.
Mm-hmm.
The appeal is from a million four thousand four hundred and eighty-eight combined, uh, which we understand now what that means, but it does, it's, it is a jurisdiction thing. In, in my mind, we only have jurisdiction over this appeal, which is appealing the total value of this property at a million four thousand four hundred and eighty-eight bucks. Now, what may happen in the future as far as splitting them all up and, you know, I understand this may not be fair, but that's not, that's not what we're looking at. We're looking at an appeal for this and we don't, we don't have the ability to start splitting things up. I just don't believe we do.
So if you, if you feel like there's an error been made and you deny it at this, then what we would probably need to do is go back and redo the division and divide it out that way to show the difference in, in that, there wasn't a building that was split. It was actually a parcel that was split and there is a building on the north half. There's a vacant lot on the south half.
Right. Well, somebody asked in the beginning, who owned this square? And I was told it was one of these entities, holdings, NGL holdings, or what's the name of the other one?
NGL and Woodland.
Woodland. And, and they're both owned by the same entity. And that's what we established in the beginning. So, you know, we got into the weeds on this.
Yeah.
Splitting things up and I just don't, uh, I don't see how we're going to have the jurisdiction to do that. That was something that had to be done to begin with. Where I'm looking at, what's the appeal? And the appeal is for the total thing at a million and four thousand and, how, how the owners split up what they think of the value of whatever is. That's not our, that's not our issue. Our issue is just what, what's before the board right now and what's not before the board is a, you know, can we split all this stuff up because we wouldn't have jurisdiction to do that.
To ease any jurisdiction concerns, I, I would note that, um, both of the account numbers are listed on nine seven six and down here where the value, the assessor's value, in parentheses, it says combined. And that was to allow the board to have jurisdiction, um, noting that that was a combined value of the two parcels. That was to allow the board to have jurisdiction to, um, split the value between the two parcels as they both deemed proper.
How many, uh, notice evaluations did you receive?
We did not receive a notice of valuation because the, the actual total value of the property was not increased from last year. So we just appealed.
Holy send them, uh.
So that was, we didn't find out about the account split until we got into the informal.
So that's, that's the reason for that. Yeah.
So what happened at the informal?
I think there was too much confusion to even understand. What we just spent thirty minutes going through, I think over the phone at an informal was just, we couldn't.
That part right there, like what's, what he's saying up there, undefined, building A, building B, fifty percent ownership. Apparently, it got past us that there was no actual building B at this point in time. So.
Our appeal was of account number ten ten and it wasn't, uh, you know, looking at something in the documents, you know, that said something about account one thousand doesn't get it done. It would have had to been a separate appeal, uh, to get, get us the jurisdiction. You have ten ten here. You're saying there's something else or another entity out there. Then the appeal would have to be a separate appeal appellate sheet.
I don't understand why you're saying that. I'm sitting here looking at the appeal and the appeal says account number R one thousand and R ten ten. Why are you saying there's only one appeal when, when that's on that, that's, it's, the count number, both of them are there?
Yeah.
But, but.
But you're trying to tell me that they're, they split here. Uh, and that's not something that we can, we can do. I just, you know.
There's not a split if, well, if, if you, if you put, what are you appealing and you put two account numbers, how are you getting a split out of that? We're appealing two account numbers. Am I missing it?
Well, I think what the confusion is, is that there wasn't a separate item on the right here on the agenda for ten, or for one thousand also.
Well, if, if that needs to be cleared up, can we just, forty-eight hours, can we just put this on Wednesday?
Um, if you'd like to hear it separately, I think, I think the big issue is that we, as we have been in the past, when one form is submitted, that is technically one appeal.
I see, I got you.
Now, and, and I think that's, whether it's ten ten or one thousand, that's, that's kind of anyone's, yeah, choice, but it's still one appeal.
Okay.
So I think it's, it's, there's not a lot of precedent with it. Um, on decision day, if you'd like to rule on them separately, we can create two separate items. If you'd like to, to do another hearing, we, we could, but, uh, again, I, I think the issue is that I don't know if you can make two separate rulings on one appeal. I mean, there's not a lot of precedent.
We, uh, typically, I mean, this is a little separate, but on, uh, for example, our personal property appeals, we will sometimes, I mean, there will be four or five account numbers, cause it's all the same property, but it just depends on how it's, you know, um, how it's divided from, uh, from an account number standpoint. So for simplicity's sake, we will, so we don't have to file six different appeals, six different nine seven sixes. We will include, you know, the account numbers on one nine seven six and, you know, say, here's the overall value and then at the, you know, at the, the. And, you know, say here's the overall value and then at the, you know, at the, the hearing is when, okay, well, we're deciding on all six of these as one appeal, but six account numbers. But it's not like it's separate property. It's still the same property. You know, it, um, it's, it's similar to if there's, uh, sometimes an apartment complex and, and one portion of the complex is on one account number and other portions on the same, but they're all connected in the same. Um, those are commonly appealed on one nine seven six and.
Commonly filed on a nine seventy-six where?
With.
With this board?
With, with this, I mean, in my experience, which is all of this year filing with this board. Um, I, I can't think of one off the top of my head with this board, but there's nothing in statute that provide, that, that states that you have to file a separate appeal on each account number and have a separate nine seven seven on every account number. Uh, the board is well within its right to, as long as the account numbers are included on the appeal, the board is well within its right to rule on the value of each account number, as long as it is included on the formal appeal.
Yeah, I disagree with that.
Would you like me to get opinion from the DA or me some?
No, I don't, I, I can tell you right now, this is a jurisdictional thing and that, it just, I've never, I've never seen an appeal of commercial or otherwise where we have different account numbers and we decide, uh, individually what each account. Appeal one account number and for simplicity's sake, put it all on one and go get it done. You've got to have separate appeal to give us jurisdiction of this thing. We have to follow the statutes. We can't just make things up as we go along and decide that, oh, okay, yeah, we'll, we'll decide because what the split is or this sort of thing. Just not gonna get done. And I, all this talk that we're doing, we're getting into the weeds and forgetting that this is a single appeal and have whatever the screw up was, you're gonna have to fix it for next year, not now. This, it's just where you're too late at this point. At this point, we're looking at one appeal, account number ten ten.
I would argue that.
Combine whatever that may mean. We're looking at the whole.
Well, I did ten show up on the agenda.
Shoot mat.
Cause ten's the second one on there. So you're saying, what showed up on the agenda?
The agenda has, has ten ten listed, but, but more primarily it has BOE number one sixty-two, which is this appeal.
Yeah, which is, which includes.
Yeah, correct. So, I mean, cause we'll, we'll vary, I mean, there could be, there could be typos in the address or something. But BOE one sixty-two as a singular item is what is on the agenda. So we can, on the decision day, I can put both of them on there. It's just a matter of.
On ten ten.
You seem to think, which, and I don't have the rights, so I'm not taking a side, that they can rule on two separate ones for one appeal and you seem to think that it's kind of invalidated by the fact that it has two of them. Which, uh, well, I don't want to, because I'm not a lawyer.
What we're deciding, at, at least in my, it's a whole shoot mat, which apparently takes in both of the accounts. But that's, that's what we're looking at. One appeal, the whole shoot mat at a million, four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight or five hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred.
See, if, um, if they rule on the, in that entire, you know.
Go to note document. I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry. I wanted to go back and, and look at the actual, uh, appeal that was filed to us and see.
It would have been based on last year's account number.
Right, but did, okay. So it's just a ten ten. At that point in time, we didn't do an appeal on one thousand at all.
Right.
Up at, at the informal.
Right.
So.
Um, but if they, uh, you know, rule on the entire, you know, property is, you know, say they were to retain the value, you, you would be able to, for purposes of splitting those values, since the, uh, the account numbers are within your system. And if they can't, you know, it, it's their position that they can't split the value between the two. Would you be able to, um, you know, split the value from a?
I, I would like to revisit the division, you know. I mean, I'm, I'm now I'm wondering, was there, should there actually have been a division between the two? I'm, I'm not.
Well, that was, so, yeah, that was a.
Was that the intent of, of the ownership to actually split the two pieces into two separate parcels?
No, the intent was to, uh, just separate that woodland, the vet clinic, um, and make sure that a prospective tenant that would come in, uh, would be, it would be clear that this spot behind is, you know, would be for you and that tenant. This property right here is, uh, it, it is, it's hard to, it's hard to explain cause it, it's like I'm saying, well, there's not a split, but there is a split and, and that's kind of.
You're just trying to tell the, the new tenant, you stay on your part and don't buy.
Right, that's.
I think, but that's where the, the confusion comes in, is when it's filed with the clerk's office, whatever. Usually it seems like that's done on a lease basis or something like that, so.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So.
So what do you think we should do? If we, we rule on ten ten Friday, technically we have jurisdiction to rule, the way Pat's talking, we have jurisdiction to rule on ten ten Friday, on Thursday. And then where does that leave them?
So, so am I correct? Cause I'm just, I'm just thinking procedurally here. Was there an informal on, on one thousand?
Apparently not.
There was only an informal on ten ten, which is probably why we only have y'all's information for ten tens. And again, I don't.
There's, there's not a note on there saying that there was an actual informal on the one thousand. When you go, when you go back to the document.
So, I mean, in my mind, I mean, I'm not, I want to be careful here, cause obviously I'm not a lawyer. I'm just thinking procedurally, the informal comes first. So I don't know if, you know, like, like, like the formal form doesn't match what I see there. And again, I don't know how we go about that. I'm just, I'm just trying to think procedurally here, how we need to put this on the agenda.
Okay, so there's nothing like that that says one thousand on the documents.
Correct, cause we were unaware of the one thousand account until the informal.
Oh, which came first?
Ten, so ten ten is.
Always existed?
On what is existing. Ten ten was last year's account number and that is the account number on which we appealed. We got to the informal and real, and found out, oh, you split these, there's thousand. So that's why on the nine seven six, we had included both of them on to that. My worry here is that if, if we're not able to do anything until next year, I'm worried that the, you know, the client was not afforded property process on the ten ten, since we were not even aware of it until we got into the informal. And at that point, you know, that the deadline to file an informal was passed. So that's why we included it on the nine seven six was to, um, you know, it, it is the same property. It was just split into two different accounts, but, um, that, that really doesn't afford the client property process because otherwise, uh, if it's not, if we can't do anything here about it, well, this is the last step. We don't have anything, uh, for that ten ten account. So i- if, if it's the board's position that nothing can happen with regard to ten ten, um, our, our client is, uh, you know, has, has no other essentially recourse in appealing that other parcel.
So in the informal, it was all intention with.
Correct.
And that's the, and that's the north part of the property or the south part?
The north.
The north. I, I missed, but earlier I meant to say, uh, that with regard to it, the thousand, um, is, the worry is that there was no due process afforded to, to file an appeal.
Let me ask the assessor, did you set a value for the south parcel?
By doing the, the split based on the division that took place. Cause based on the fifty percent ownership filed, so that's what happened. Again, just thinking that there was two, there was apparently another building there or they thought that building B was part of that existing building that they were saying that.
Okay, so, uh, what we're talking about for the value that you've set on the north parcel is five hundred and two thousand, whatever that is, two hundred and forty-four bucks.
Yes, that's, that's the current value on the, on the north.
And the south is set at the same value.
The same.
Except it has not been properly appealed, so, you know, there it is. So really what we're to decide here is whether the five hundred and two thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars is fair market value of the north section.
Right, with that building on.
That's what ten ten is, that north section.
Yes.
All right. So we're really looking at five hundred and two thousand.
So.
And.
Why can't we just pass this? Pass the, pass this as an agenda item and then on, and to Wednesday says.
You know, the appeal time is already passed.
Unless I can, unless I can find out something to be done with the division itself and see if, and see if I can find a way to.
But that's not, that's not his fault that the appeal time is gone.
That was my worry about the due process.
That's not his fault. You're now trying to tell him he can never come back in here this year on that because his time for appealing is gone. He thought he was appealing it because it was the same number and he was unaware that that was a new number. We can't, not that we can't do.
Well, there, I, I will say again that there were, it seems multiple plats or divisions that were done in that particular area. So I can see why that happened.
Can we shut him out of, 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 meaning a statutory period when he didn't know of the other one existing?
No, but that's not, that's not an issue that we can, we can decide. You either, you either get it or you don't. And, uh, for what we're looking at, apparently the assessor has changed it from a million, four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars on the parcel that's in front of us, which is that front parcel. It's five hundred and two thousand, two hundred and forty-four bucks. What, what do you say the value of that is?
Of the, of the southern parcel?
Of the north.
Of the northern parcel?
That's, uh, 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 let's get an answer here.
Is.
I think you're mixing the numbers. Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
On the northern parcel, it would be. Cause our value encompasses the entire, um, rectangle there, um.
So we're talking about the north part of it. Cause apparently that's what ten ten is, is the north part. That's the only part that's in front of us right now. The south part, if not, if not in front of us. We're just, we're just deciding what's the north.
North R, oh, that's the old number.
Yeah. I would, I would say that is our opinion that the, the north, the ten ten value. Make sure that I have this, yeah. So. The. So the, the north parcel, the north account number is one thousand.
That's why I said.
That, so we're dealing with the south part.
That is vacant.
And it's just vacant land?
Yes.
What's the assessor's value of that? The north is not for it.
He said three hundred thousand. With seven hundred and four, four eighty-eight, which you told me not to get into, but now you're asking. So seven oh four, four eighty-eight was the, was the north and three hundred thousand was the south.
Is, if, is, is assessor's value is three hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay. And what say the taxpayer?
Um, so earlier, it, I mean, the argument was taking the, the sale price of, of four hundred of the whole lot. So just, uh, if that's what the, the board believes the value of that land is, then I would say half of that, which would be two hundred thousand would be the value of the southern portion.
Okay. So the assessor is at three hundred thousand, taxpayer wants two hundred thousand.
Correct.
All right, that, now we get, this will be easy now.
All right. And, and we can't touch one thousand. We can't rule any value on one thousand. So it's set at this point at five hundred thousand range, okay? So someone's gonna get a bargain here today.
Okay.
Could get a bargain.
Well, that we made seven hundred for him and, and he was.
Can't rule on one thousand though.
That's right.
All right, on ten ten only, you're at three hundred thousand, he wants two hundred thousand. And that's what's before it. It's a vacant land, we've, we beat this horse to death. We understand what we're looking at. Anything else from the assessor?
I am going to re, I'm going to revisit the, how the division was done. Prior, based on the declaration that was provided and make sure that was done properly.
Okay, but what I'm asking is, what, oh, you're figuring out now what your final value is gonna be?
No.
You're at three hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, nothing else you need to add to that?
No.
Okay, uh, you're at two hundred thousand. Uh, understand your argument, so, uh, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to decide here. And with nothing else to add to ten ten, I'm gonna close the, uh, one sixty-two, open up the hearing on BOE one eighty-five, I hope. It's an account number ending in ten seventy. Do we have hidden account numbers other than this?
There's no invisible property on this one.
All right, this is the property at one hundred northeast eighty-fifth street. The owner is tag one core RE Holdings LLC. Assessor has it at fifteen million, five hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And the, uh, taxpayer is asking for eleven million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, all that right?
Correct.
Okay, so, well, tell us what, first of all, what is this?
So this is a surgical hospital, an orthopedic surgical hospital. Um, it's right up there next to, uh, Chicken and Pickle. That is a, I think a movie theater over there and some stuff and right in that area. Um, that is, it was constructed in twenty twenty-one. Um, and I think that is about it as far as the description of the property. Uh, I will, I'll pass around, I have two exhibits, both of which were provided in the informal.
What was the cost of building, like in twenty twenty-one?
Uh, the total cost, the cost of construction, um, I don't have the, the construction figures. Um, so the first exhibit that I'm passing around is an income valuation, a, a pro forma income valuation based on, um, market rents and market expenses.
This was presented at the informal?
Yes. And then the second exhibit here was, um, an equity. And then the second exhibit here was, um, an equity comp analysis based on, uh, similar properties in the area. That, uh, and their current assessed values.
And this was also presented at the informal?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, could I like to ask a question before I start getting into the.
Um, so you'll see, you know, highlighted in yellow on these exhibits are the, the value conclusions based on, uh, you know, first the income, a little more north of nine point two million, and then we're a little, we're about eight point seven. I am arguing, of course, for eleven million. That eleven mil- million was based, uh, upon, you know, before I, I did actually a pro forma income, but it was based in large part, almost essentially on the current assessed value of that McBride Orthopedic Hospital. It is.
Just south of there.
Yeah, it is, it is, uh, yeah, subject property is just south of the McBride. McBride was built in twenty eighteen, um, our property was, the subject property was built in twenty twenty-one. Um, McBride is about thirty-five thousand. The subject property, which I think there's a discrepancy between us and the assessor's office on the square footage, uh, but we're, we have a, a square footage of thirty-eight thousand, um, very similar, and that McBride is currently assessed at three hundred and twelve dollars a foot, and we are currently assessed at four hundred and ten dollars a foot, and so that, uh, eleven million just comes, uh, I, I honestly just disregarded the other properties, just considering this is a, both orthopedic surgical hospitals within, you know, a ten minute or twenty minute walk from each other, and, uh, I, I just felt that this McBride was the best equity comp there is, and that it should be assessed in line with the McBride.
Okay, that is for right now?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
Your question, if you asked, was the very question I asked, and I never got an answer, what did it cost to build? And the reason why I was adamant about getting a cost to build was because there aren't that many of these things in here. Maybe the, he wants to use the McBride, maybe that's a good number, maybe it's not. I'm looking for the best information I can have. I'm not necessarily a proponent of using a cost approach all the time, but when you have something that's brand new and is pretty rare, why not give it to me? Okay, that was my deal. If, I would also go back to the, uh, one of his other comps that's on here, and that is the, uh, new hospital up there at one hundred and fiftieth at Penn, which currently you have on for five hundred and thirteen dollars a foot, and that may be high. I'm, you know, I don't, I don't think I've heard from those people. So that, those were my, my questions right there, is give me something to work with, cause I, I don't believe in equity comps always. Well, I, I usually put equity comps back at the bottom of my list of stuff to look at. His income approach based on twenty-six dollars a square foot has absolutely no bearing, there's nothing that he's actually got that's gonna match up with what this hospital is. If you have sales on these types of properties, if you start looking at market approach, usually they're RE type sales, or sale leaseback types of things, you know, and then, so then you have to get into figuring those out. So.
What, uh, what about building permits on this?
I, 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 yeah, I think it had like an eight million dollar permit, and I, I mentioned that a little while ago, I'm very skeptical of building permits. I even talked to the people at the city, and they just kinda, well, and I'm going. I, I've seen too many things where the building permit was not near what the actual cost to build this, to build a proper. So.
Less, it was less.
Oh.
Permit is less.
Absolutely, absolutely, many times. So you just have to take that with a grain of salt. And plus, there's usually so many building permits, you know, you have them on buildings, plumbing, electrical, there, there's, you know, there's multiples, and when you get into buildings like this, you don't know if you're getting them all at all. So, uh, I would have, I would have at least liked to have started with that right there, and I, I would have been happy to, to work further down from there if I needed to, but that was where I was. I didn't have any, I didn't have any faith in what his income approach was, and equity comps, again, I just.
How'd you come up with your value?
Well, that was the cost that we came up with on our system, and that's why I say is, yeah, is, is, I'm not necessarily saying that I'm totally agreeing with that either. Again, it goes back to fact, these are, you know, there's just not that many that we have on our, so.
There's another, there's another hospital in this area that hasn't been listed, and it's, it's another community hospital at ninety-eight hundred Broadway Extension. I know, cause I've spent twice in there.
Is that on the opposite side of the street?
Same side of the street, it's by McBride. And it's an orthopedic hospital, too.
The surgical center of Oklahoma?
What is, is that ninety-eight oh one North Oklahoma Avenue?
It could be, if that's in front of it, it's. It's H C C I, that's it.
No, that, I'm sorry, that was McBride, I gave you that, I'm sorry.
H C I Metaplex today.
So what is it?
It's an orthopedic hospital as well.
The value of that one, that one's up for twenty-four million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand.
What's the square footage of that one?
Hundred and five, let's see here, so this is, uh, twenty-four million, one, twenty-four million, one ninety.
What was the name of that one?
H C C I.
Yeah.
Harper Paul Jacob.
Yeah.
So we're on twenty-two, oh no, twenty-four, one ninety-two, and we said what we're looking at, a hundred and five thousand?
Square feet?
Hundred and five, four twenty-six. It's two hundred and twenty-nine.
See, McBride. My question is, was this hospital that we're looking at right now, was that an issue presented at the informal hearing?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding, what, what's your question?
It was not, okay.
That was not.
This is a brand new hospital, this was run off for the first time this year, and that was why the question was posed, how much did it cost to build it?
Right, and, but the hospital that we're looking at right now, or whatever that is, uh.
Oh, no, that was not on his list at first.
You did not consider this at all?
No, I, I don't even know that, I knew it was there.
All right. And I, I didn't consider, I, I did look at this and, and thought about putting it on there, cause of, of course, it's favorable to me, um, as far as the cost per square foot standpoint. The reason I didn't, it's cause it's a hundred and five thousand square feet, and this one, the subject is about thirty-eight. I try to use square footages that are, that are similar, which is why, um, you know, the, the very bottom one here, as Steve had pointed out, that is at, uh, five hundred and thirteen dollars square foot. Well, I put it on there just so it didn't look like I was just picking the most favorable ones, but it is, um, more, more than half of the size of the subject, and of course, the higher you go up in square footage, the lower the cost per square foot is.
True.
Um, which is why, you know, I urge that, um, that McBride Orthopedic, that is, you know, the, the subject property, that is their number one competitor, that they're giving referrals, you know, either they're there, and you're, um, you know, within ten minutes of walking from each other, and I would just urge that, uh, you know, we be assessed on the same footage basis, or at least substantially similar to that McBride Orthopedic.
And is that how you arrived at your eleven million?
Yes. Yeah, that's why I didn't even use the eight point eight, that, from averaging all of these comps, I just went straight up off of that McBride, cause I just, I felt that was the most fair and equitable value for the subject.
Okay. See, assessor's opinion, what do you say?
I, I, again, like I said, the comps, uh, assessment comps are not, are not my favorite way of looking at things, unless I know a little bit more about them, so. Uh, no, I, I would have stood on, on the deal, why not just give me the cost to at least start out at?
What did you have them at last year?
This is a brand new building.
Them? Twenty twenty-one, so they were, you were, he said, you built it in twenty twenty-one, so January twenty twenty-two, they weren't on the road. Okay.
Okay.
When it's so late in the year, you can always subpoena that information.
I don't like that word, usually means that's a new word.
Sorry.
All right, anything else from the assessor?
No, sir.
And that's taxpayer.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm gonna close hearing on BOE one eighty-five, which is the last one.
Yep, he's, he's law school student.
Oh.
All right, don't, don't talk when I'm talking. All right, we close the hearing on that one eighty-five, which is a gap number ending in ten seventy. Uh, that's the last one on the docket today, seeing those citizens, any board comments now?
So.
Okay.
So, so let me ask this of y'all, so I know what to put on the agenda for decision day, which will be next Monday.
Oh, on that one we were screwing around with?
Yes.
It's, it's ten ten, totally ten ten.
And that is, and I, cause I just wanna make sure, cause if this comes up again, since this is, obviously doesn't really have a precedent, if this comes up again, the reason we are going with ten ten is because that is what the informal was filed on, correct? Okay, just making sure I understand, okay, and that's obviously why it was the only one on today.
Okay.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, there's one where the taxpayer's at, uh, two hundred thousand, the assessor's at three hundred thousand.
Perfect.
So here, do you say?
Close that one out.
Thursday will have six added and Monday will be six.
Correct, yes, so, so it'll be an abnormally late decision day, but that's because the guy came in last minute to do Thursday, and then Monday we will adjourn the entire session.
Okay.
And you don't want a, a DA opinion, or?
No.
Okay, okay, just making sure.
Was the DA right, or the DA you're gonna ask?
Move the wager.
Second.
All in favor?
So where do you go?
I'll, I'll see you. Yeah, I'll be at two oh.
I was off for a long time, I'm pretty good.
I can, I can almost spot it.